All right, that's fine. We're ready, Patrick. The floor is yours for the hour.
Okay. Well, Dennis and the team, thank you very much. I really appreciate that you were very patient for the comments in the meeting minutes. I hope you got them and you guys got a chance to look at them. We do have half an hour. I thought about giving you an hour, but we had another team coming in at six oh five, something like that. But if you prefer to start by commenting on the comment, that would be good, but we'll leave it up to you. I think to make it a fair process is to let you make comments on what we gave you.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm Wes Henson at the Law Firm of Henson Falk, a local law firm in Indian Trail. I think I've met most of you on the board, on the council. For those who haven't, it's a pleasure to see you, a pleasure to meet you. We did receive as a team, and we've got representatives here from the development team, from the ownership group, from NVR and the apartment, I mean, excuse me, the town home folks and Evolve on the apartment side. So there are multiple people here, again, like last meeting, that potentially could have some input to add, that would add value to the dialogue. First thing I'd like to say is just thank you for the last meeting. Thank you for the opportunity. Whoever took the notes and the minutes did a phenomenal job, and then reducing those down to council and staff comments was very beneficial to our team. And so when I read through the comments, and we've had meetings internally, and the most recent was even a meeting this morning at eight thirty to kind of finalize a few sort of comments and get the synergy for the project, I think everyone on the development team appreciates the attention and the input that the town council and the staff has put into the project. Rather than going sort of line item by line item across the comments, I think there are three or four buckets which we could put in a host of the comments. One seems to be a traffic bucket and roadway improvement. One seems to be site design. There are certain comments throughout the staff and council report that speaks to design criteria or redesign criteria. There's a comment or two as to development mix. And then there is a few comments which are very well received on the need for a project of this size to have a public outreach and a public information session. And so tackling those in no specific order, oh, there's one other sort of unique bucket, which was the school capacity study. We reached out to the school board to get a copy of that school capacity study. Our contact at the school board, I believe, had a daughter who was involved in a accident, a car accident this morning, and a medical issue that took her out of the office. That should be something that we can put our hands on very quickly and get those back to the town staff who could disseminate to the council. I should also say that John Ross was sort of leading this moderator's job at the last meeting. John is very fortunately out of the country with his family, somewhere in Germany or Austria right now. So his inability to be here today is why I am standing before you and pinch hitting. So as to the public outreach and public information sessions, we talked about last meeting, potentially having the town be a participant in that meeting. We've talked internally from the development team and from the respective users, and everyone sees benefit in that. Everyone sees benefit in the more education that you can put out there, the more opportunity for Q and A and a sort of a, in the round town meeting or community meetings, that that's of benefit. And everyone on this team has committed to host a few of those events for the sake of getting that message out and providing that Q and A and that resource for the community. And so that's sort of an overall goal that everyone shares, I believe, on both sides. As to the first bucket being traffic, there are a number of comments. One of the things I would like to clear up from the last meeting is there's a comment that, the very first one on traffic, that the four-lane boulevard and roundabout at Wesley Chapel was not programmed to now come online until 2025, and I think that is accurate. The information that we had and received just in the day or two before the last workshop was different from that. So the information that we presented at that last workshop was the current information that we had at the time. There's a spin-off dialogue with the DOT that has sort of corrected that timeframe. So I do think that's an accurate projection of that roadwork in terms of what types of improvements would be made to that corridor and to the seventy-four corridor, the Fawnbrook Drive corridor, and the Wesley Chapel Stouts corridor. Those are all, the comments are all well received. The response is that those improvements will be based on the results of an updated traffic impact analysis. So it's not unlike any other project that you guys have in front of you that requires a traffic impact analysis, which are small projects and large projects. Whatever the results of that analysis, whatever those results suggest would be what we would be prepared to do in terms of off-site and onsite improvements for traffic. To the extent that, for that purpose, for that analysis to be conducted, it's a substantial expense of what we're looking for on our side. And I think the purpose of this dialogue is to get clarity on whether or not we've got a project in concept that is supported by the town. And so, again, not unlike any other project. This one is maybe a little greater in size, but in terms of procedure, you're talking about the same A, B, C steps to get to the conclusion of what those improvements would be. Whatever the improvements are suggested as it relates to that traffic impact analysis is what this team is prepared to do. I can't tell you right now, sitting here, what that would be. I can tell you that for the analysis to take place, it's imperative to know what the use is on the site that's being analyzed. So we're back to sort of that chicken and egg. It's hard to ask what we're intending to do for roadway improvements until we understand what site, you know, mixed would be to provide to the traffic engineers to perform the analysis to then go to the DOT and to get results. You know, then there is a bucket of comments that has to do with site design or redesign. And there are some that are, and all of those comments are well received on this side, too. What you've seen in front of you is a site plan that shows you conceptually what the project looks like in terms of density, unit mix, the things like whether a cul-de-sac can be extended to a connective road, whether or not there can be buffers or amenitizing the water quality areas. Those are, you know, those are comments that, again, this site plan isn't a final site plan in terms of creating an apartment project that has shared green space in the middle. I want to communicate that the design that you're seeing is not the final end design. Your comments are well received, and additional comments from the staff would be well received and integrated into that final site plan design. Again, what we're looking for is just clarity on whether or not we have support from the town to move forward and spend those additional dollars. We've gone through probably historically since buying the property in 2007, probably four would be a minimum, complete engineered site plans, traffic at impact analysis, beginning to end. I mean, for our team, it's a, to put these things together is a substantial expense. It's a six-figure expense to get there. So rather than sort of relive the experience of the last few times, we're trying to get that clarity on support. Things like creating the centralized open space, amenitizing the water quality pools, you know, again, those are things that everyone on this team felt was a valuable comment to include into the final site plan and the development of it. There are a couple comments that are, that are sort of the sticky wickets. And I recognize that this is accumulation of comments from all different sources and all different opinions. There are a few comments that are what I would put in the non-starter bucket, and one of those or two of those are, we understand that the council's preference would be to approve the project in phases. We also appreciate what the crown jewel of the project would be in terms of the town's size, which would be a hotel site, retail, nice restaurants. For the development side, approving the project in phases would not be something that we could manage on our side. We need to be able to, for development efficiencies, size detention facility, size utility lines, size for public works. So the approval, what we would be asking for is overall approval, and then we could phase that development as part of that approval. But to only know, how do you grade a site? How do you size a detention facility without knowing what a substantial portion of the site's going to be used for? You know, also sort of the wait-and-see approach of completion of all the roadwork before you entertain the project is also something that is sort of a non-starter on our side. We need the clarity whether to go forward or not. Mayor Protemp, you asked at the last development meeting, you said, you know, there are other projects that have been approved. When am I going to see earth turning on that? When are we going to see some traction on those? And the response from the development team was, well, it's, you know, through the entitlement process, it's several months. You asked about the Radiator Road site. It closed April ninth. I think it was explained in the minutes that there's eight months of design that goes on after that project design. There's another six, eight months that we're sort of held hostage on the permitting of it. So every, you know, anything of this size is a two-year from green light would be the earliest possible start. Now, that doesn't necessarily speak to the out parcels or the hotel site or things like that that could come online a little faster in a phased development, but even there with building permits, with the design phase, it's still that length of time. So I say that to mean to wait and see until an access is complete, then to analyze what the improvement was, then to go through the process. If we went through that process now, it would more closely mirror these improvements having come online and much closer in time to even the final result for the Wesley Chapel Stouts four-lane thoroughfare by the time the final phases of these uses came online. And then I think that in terms of the, sort of the last bucket, which is the development mix, there was a few comments to see a greater emphasis on commercial and certain retail uses. And I can tell you that, you know, in the market, retail is a, I don't want to say it's dead. It's not, but it's dying. Office uses are still in play, but retail is something that with the Amazons of the world and Walmart and what things are going to, an online presence is just dramatically changing that landscape. What it requires now to get that type of commercial use and office use is rooftops and density. And so what we've got now with a super street is sort of a divided area. You're going to have projects that serve one side of the road and projects that serve the other side of the road. And I say that to mean the mix is market-driven. There are market studies that show what demand is present in a town. There is demand for that hotel right now. There's demand for that single-family detached right now. There's demand for that apartment use right now. In terms of restaurants and those ancillary businesses, although we would love to have that come online very first, there's no way to commit to and promise that. If those concept restaurants and nice restaurants understood the population mix that would be there in a rocks throw or in a walkable pedestrian access, then that provides the traction that we need to get those things put online faster. And quite frankly, those sites are more accessible so that you can see how, even though it's market-driven, even though it's approval-driven, rooftop-driven, to be pushing forward with that use doesn't require the complete build-out of those. So it's not lineal in time to where that won't come until we build it. Knowing what's coming and running those projects in tandem is something that's done every day in mixed-use developments. So again, you know, I can tell you that, for instance, on the hotel site, we would love to be able to say, this is the first thing built, and it very easily could be the first thing built. I can tell you that at Gateway Commons, which is another project that similar ownership interests, not identical, but there are common owners between both projects that sit at the corner of seventy-four and Stallings Road in Stallings, that was, that has now been a fully approved mixed-use development, that the unit mix with the residential, detached residential supports the commercial out parcels there. That hotel, there's a hotel site there that's currently approved. Stallings approved the entire mixed-use project. And right now, that is a green light go project for this same development team. It's going to be built into stabilization right now. Those market studies show that we have the demand for the same hotel or the same number of rooms, rather, may not be the same style of hotel, but the same need for hotel, and Indian Trail as well, even though that's five miles down the road. We do think Sun Valley Marketplace is a prime place for it. It felt like Sun Valley Commons, that unit mix and those rooftops supported it, too. I just don't know that the town felt that that was a congruent use. This site location being between the respective parks is an ideal, is an ideal place on seventy-four. So I say that to use that as a contrasting example. When that site was fully approved, you're seeing that hotel site is being green-lighted to be the first thing out of the ground right now. A few things that I just want to kind of go back and touch on, and if anyone has questions with anything I'm saying, please just stream of consciousness, feel free to jump right The opportunity for that retail, as I mentioned, is driven by the density count. So what we're looking for is an understanding to proceed with the traffic study, with the reengineering, with the redesign to incorporate these comments that you've made into a new site design. We're looking for a show of support. We're looking for an understanding that if we gear down to spend the cash that's going to be required to push this across the line, that we have something that the council can support in terms of overall site mix so that then we can work with the staff on those nuances, on areas of landscaping and buffering and noise mitigation. I think that the comments are very clear. They're a clear directive to us. They're also a clear directive to the staff of what's important for the town or the council. And so what we're looking for, again, is that understanding of support so we can greenlight the expense to go through the process, so we can work with the town and the staff to achieve the common goals. We need to understand if, in fact, what's been presented in concept and in density mix is, in fact, a common goal. And I think that's where we are.
Any comment from the council?
David, did you have comments?
Well, I know what you're asking for, Wes, and I don't know that you, if you want to poll the council, or should we go down each one and say, I don't know that we're that, and I know you, I know what you want, and I don't blame you. You know, I'd want it, too. Some sort of answer. And, you know, we gave you comments and, you know, it's something that I don't think we have really done, is really talk, we did talk, we hadn't talked that much with, to staff about it, and got staff's input into it. And I think what staff does and what they think, too, because I think a lot of times they're more of an expert on a lot of the things, because they work with us a lot. But, you know, I expressed some of my comments. There's certain things I like about it, you know. There's, I like the hotel, and I know you're saying you can't, you can't really tell us whether or not you want to build that hotel first, and, you know, you got a hotel that might start up in Stallings or somewhere, and we, of course, would want to try to beat that, beat that thing. So I'll be honest with you, and just for the sake of, nobody else was talking, I kind of felt like I ought to say something, you know, and get, and get something started.
And I appreciate it, too, by the way, filling the void with some noise.
And say nothing, but I'm.
That is kind of what we're looking for.
Yeah.
It's a show of support, almost a hand raise. We understand the application's not before any of you in front of a vote, but yeah, to really feel good about moving forward, we would like a show of hands if, for lack of a better, you know, approach.
And just, and this is just my opinion, and this is nobody else's opinion whatsoever, is, and just to get the ball rolling with the council, are you guys ready to give an answer? Are you ready to say whether or not you're, you're, you're ready to say move forward, move backwards, move, or, you know, what direction do we want to, what direction do we want to go in? Are you ready for that? Or do you want to, well, Shirley's got something to say now, thank God.
Would you consider, if this is approved, building the hotel in Indian Trail and holding off on the one in Stallings?
You know, that's not really something that this team could dictate because, again, the landowners are different group of folks. So what we've got is a fully green-lighted plan in Stallings to move forward. So I can tell you that with that green light, that has turned that project in on the TIC list, or TIP list, that has put that on a fully green-lighted, moving-forward status. I can also tell you that the market data says that there's plenty of demand for two hotels.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, but I'm looking out for Indian Trail first.
Right.
We went through the situation from Monroe Road, and that didn't pan out, so.
Mm-hmm.
And this, this won't be ready until 2025?
That 2025 date is the, where the full NC DOT improvements to Wesley Chapel Stouts, turning that into a full-lane boulevard, the final sort of design that you saw in that site plan is the finished DOT improvement. So that, that is what was, you know, they're not committing to having that completely online until 2025.
I personally am for building it in phases rather than leaving it open like on Idrawell Road, the shopping center over there. That's sort of hanging most of the time. It's not kept very well, and I have a little, a few photographs that I took over there, and I just want to make sure it's in the right place and the right time and it's taken care of.
Well, and I live in Shanamara, which is right there, so I experience that on a daily basis. And I can tell you that those, you know, that also has funded, that project on Idrawell Road is also a funded DOT project. They intended to super street some of that. The town of Stallings or the residents have came, come back to protest that and say, we don't want to super street there. So I know that there is, there are forces at play that make those decisions that are at play in that, in that area, you know. I don't, I don't know that the improvement of Wesley Chapel Stouts Road is as nearly controversial as super streeting Idrawell Road through there. I think that the, sort of the simplicity of Wesley Chapel Road's expansion is something that every single person's behind if you're not as a citizen or a town council. I mean, I don't see there being a rebellion amongst the population to stop that from happening or to slow that timeframe down. And what we're suggesting is that TIA may suggest that there are roadway improvements that we would need to do in between here and that delivery date from the DOT, and we're prepared to look at that just like we would any other results of a TIA.
Well, again, if we were taking a vote, I would, I would prefer that it be done in phases.
You mean in terms of the approval or the construction?
Well, let me see, is that a trick question?
Well, again, it's one thing to only approve a hotel site or retail site, which we could do right now anyway with this current zoning, versus, and wait for the approval of a town home project or wait for the approval of a hotel, I mean, of an apartment site. We're not, we're looking for a mixed-use master plan site approval, even if we then phase the, even if part of that approval is phasing the development, phasing how it comes online. You know, what we don't, what we're not interested in on the development side is getting the approval of an eighth of the site, to then have to come back to council for an approval of another two eighths of the site, and then come back for another three eighths, four eighths, five eighths, to go through this process five times. Because, again, the efficient, the cost of development and the efficiency of developing dictates that it needs to be done at one time for us. It's for balancing of the site, it's for leveling it, it's for sizing the water lines, sizing the utility lines.
Do you have approval on all that at this point?
We do not have approval because there's not a pending application. Now, we do have things that we've done. We fully paid all capacity, prepaid all capacity fees, allocation fees with Public Works, but again, that approval is part of the application that we're talking about with the town here. They don't have anything before them presently as relates to this. Now, we've met and we have comments, but there aren't approvals in place.
So there's enough water?
Enough water and enough sewer.
Okay.
Oh, there was another comment, not to derail it, but what, what agreements do you have, or what dialogue has been had with Lowe's? With the Lowe's site, there are existing recorded easement agreements for our site. There are two documents that speak to the interplay of the area right beside Lowe's as well as all of the rear property in terms of common access, common drive aisle use. It's reciprocal, it's fifty-five pages in total that addresses, generally speaking, all of the matters that would come up as between us and Lowe's in the development of this project, already contemplated. You know, Lowe's site sold in two thousand, early two thousand eight, so at that point, the entire project, it was being analyzed as an entire project at that point. So those, those concepts of co-development or lineal development between the sites were already contemplated and have been agreed on. The reality is that before the next, the non-Lowe's, that was the last Lowe's building to be constructed and completed that they had under contract in 2008. Matter of fact, I'm of the belief that they dropped every other contract that they had because of the economy turning at that point. This was the last one to be built in that time, in that time period. So unfortunately, the rest of the site fell victim to that 2008, 2012, you know, financial issue, financial crisis. So, but I just mean to say, the takeaway is that, yeah, the reciprocal rights as it relates to utilities, as it relates to drive aisles, as it relates to access, all of those things are already established with Lowe's.
We're running very short on time for the presentation, so just to recap what I've heard, the Sun Valley Commons was approved, I'd say, eight years ago, when the theater area was approved?
Yeah, it's at least eight.
And here it is, eight years later, it's still under construction. I would assume a project of this size would take a similar amount of time to be completed. If I heard you correctly, you're looking for complete approval, and if you get complete approval, you're willing to work with the council to bring in common sense phases on when to bring things in and bring them back.
The staff, yes.
That would be my concern, and I don't think there's a better location for this type of development. Bring it towards the highway, they're out there doing the road construction, the pillow tacks, everything falls into place, and I know the millennial mindset that you have to have multifamily around it. It's just the way of the future, we have to learn to live with it. But we have currently starting, in about three weeks, massive reconstruction and remodeling to our schools. That's going to take about thirty-six months. That's going to be hectic, although we're on the downside of the, of the major overcrowding that happened due to the growth spurt, when we're now getting less and less students. We had two peaks, one major one and one a little bit smaller, and now it's just going down. My concern would be having the multifamily built in that thirty-six months while the schools are being constructed and kind of hectic. Are you willing to work with? Are you willing to work with that?
Well, again, a, a green light, we're 24 months in to turn dirt of the 36 you're referring to.
So then it's, yeah.
As a starting line.
That's a no brainer then.
Right.
They won't even be constructed by the time the schools are, are built.
Right.
So you're looking at even beginning on the first, 2021, by the time everything's ready to go and you've got frames up.
It's 2018 now, yeah.
2018.
Mm-hmm. So we're, you're 2018 to 19, 19 to 20, you're talking about the schools coming online by 2021.
Yeah, about 2000, they're saying the end of 2019, beginning of 20, but anything can happen.
We would be talking about the starting line being in 2020.
Okay. Hopefully that clarifies a little bit more to the timeframe because we can't just approve it today and then move dirt tomorrow.
And I, I want to clarify for everybody in the room, there is no approval happening, nothing. This is, this is a workshop communication. You're, you know, we're all, we're trying to work together and, and, and so we all have an understanding. The board here, this council's looking at this from 35,000 feet. Does this idea seem to work for the town of Indian Trail in concept? There is a lot and lots and lots of work to be done, but I just wanted that, to clarify that to council. We're not approving anything, um, we're giving a head nod at best that we like what you're talking about. And if you keep continuing this manner.
Resolution of support.
That's not even a resolution, there's nothing going on here. There is no, this is a workshop communication. Okay, okay, I just want that very, very clear.
We have another.
There's not a pending application before you to vote, have a public hearing and say yes to. It's more of again, a, and maybe resolution sounds too formal, but it is a public forum, everyone's here. So that is what we're looking for is a.
You're getting, and what, all they can, all they can give is A, we like where you're going with this.
Right.
That's all they can give.
Okay.
An articulation of support?
For the sake of time, because we do have somebody, and I, I know we have somebody coming up. If we just go down and say, uh, what do we want, what do we want to say either?
Literally, this is a policy and the space that you're all talking about, this looks like a good idea for Indian Trail.
A good idea or not a good idea?
That's, that's about all we can go with.
If we can start on one end or, or, uh, and go down the other way?
I think it's a good idea for, for the town.
Okay, and, and one last thing, if I may say, uh, good idea, bad, uh, bad idea or, uh, or let's talk about it and, and, and come up with, with a answer either on the 14th or the 28th, same type meeting and, and talk about it some more. So that'd be, that'd be all the different options, so, anyway, go ahead. So it's a good idea.
I can provide any support for the project.
Shirley?
Good idea with some adjustments.
David?
I, I'll tell you the truth, I don't know to be, I mean, I, I, I like some of the things about it. I like, I don't like some of the other things about it. I'd like to talk to council more and we talk about it more. But, um, I, you know, I, I hate to be wishy washy and go back in the middle, but I really don't know how, know, know whether I support it or not. I, I want to support it, but, um, I want to do what the residents want us to do, but.
I'll just put it this way, if I had to vote today, I'd probably say no. Um, I, I, there's just not enough information, um, you know, the information that was given originally in terms of timing for roadways, we knew it was wrong, um, and it is wrong. The, the no phasing bothers me. Uh, I, I do think a hotel is needed, um, but there's just not enough information for me to, to say yes or no. So with it being that way, I would have to say no at this time.
One complete saying it's a good idea, one maybe, one good idea with some adjustments, one absolute no, and one needs more information.
Are there anything, are there any substantive, and again, you've made comments, Bert, are there for, uh, the last two gentlemen, are there things that you're looking for that is just the, something to hang your hat on? You said that there are things that you like, things that you don't like. Is there something to hang the hat on that we can to have a takeaway from this opportunity to understand what one of those absolute problems is?
What, what, to, you know, make it as quickly as possible. I think there's a lot of things that, that we don't know, that, you know, we don't know when the, when the, the hotel's going to be built. We don't know whether the hotel's going to be built first. We don't know whether or not you're going to build, the hotel's going to be, be first, built first in, in Stallings or whether it's going to be built here. You know, I, I personally would like to see, I, I'm not a big apartment person. I don't, I don't particularly care for, I, I, I don't want Indian Trail to become a, 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 a lot of, more of apartments here in this town. I'd rather see townhomes. And, and those may be things that we can talk about and maybe they're not. It's your, it's you guys' property and you guys can, can do, but do with it as you please. But I definitely would, would kind of like to see ownership of some properties opposed to apartments. But, uh, and that, those are some of the, what things that go on in my mind.
Well, that provides some insight. One of those comments in the, in the staff report or the, the council report was, uh, in overall G that said, few council members are in favor of replacing apartment with townhomes. We didn't know if that meant few of you were in favor or a few would be in favor. So it was a multiple interpretation, so thank you for that.
I, I don't know how much more I could add. You know, the, the townhomes, one of the concerns I think was that the, um, average price was 175 to 225. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that. If it was townhomes, it might sway me. Phasing, again, um, I, I would really want to see phasing.
Development phasing, you mean?
Yes.
And to wrap this up, because we don't want to be any ruder, if you can add one thing to that, I'd like to see some Class A office space somewhere in the vision for this. If possible, I don't, I don't know if the layout of the land allows for that, that's just, uh, on the wish list.
Got it. Thank you. And thank you all for the time. Any other questions for anyone else on the development team?
I have one last comment, if I may. With it, traffic is an issue. Will it be, I mean, will it be okay with, with the team to move forward with updating that traffic study and maybe get the school information before or, or no?
That's something we would discuss.
I, I see some positiveness out there because the project, for both projects, they're going to be completed at the end of 2018. So you might get some less traffic on Independence and on bypass that might help the traffic impact study. So, uh, but again, that's up to the team to, I, I think it would be good to move one thing out of the way. And I know it, it costs money, but, uh, to come back before the, before council, it would be a good thing to have it done.
We'd certainly take that under advisement.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got to move quickly for the next presentation.
Okay.
Counsel, we appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk to you one more time. My name's Tommy Price, I represent, um, Secret Shortcut Development. I have with me tonight Mr. Mark Kahn that you met last time, they are the design team. I have also, um, brought Mr. Greg Shelton, who I'm sure you guys are aware, we heard your comments last time and the, the major ones were traffic in schools. So what we've decided to do is something that we feel like Indian Trail needs and that is to change course a little bit and go with a fully age restricted neighborhood. I've heard some comments about, um, re- reverting back, you know, will it stay, blah, blah, blah? That's what Mr. Shelton's going to answer all those questions for you. We are actually, uh, he will explain the HOPA federal guidelines to you and, and certain items of that. And I know a lot of you are aware that HOPA says you can do 80% restricted, 20% can be marketed to anybody. We're going to go a step beyond that and 100% restricted. Now, we can't, we do have, you know, there will be a 20% number in there that'll be for hardship cases. Somebody has, go ahead.
Would a hardship case include, and please, grandparents that all of a sudden inherit a grandchild because of a tragedy?
I'm going to let Mr. Shelton answer this for you. Any, any questions you may have about, um, the design that you guys saw before, um, Mr. Kahn can answer for you, he's a designer. With that, I'm sure you got plenty of questions for, um, Mr. Shelton. So I'm just going to bring him on up and let him do his thing with you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Greg Shelton, Law Firm of Horack Tally. I was going to give you all just a summary of HOPA, but I don't know if you have specific questions that you want to ask, just feel free to. So in 1968, a year before I was born, um, Congress passed the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination based on race, gender, religion, et cetera. And one of those factors was familial status. And HOPA, uh, there was a, built an exception to the Fair Housing Act, which allowed, uh, retirement communities or age specific communities, as long as they had facilities that, you know, were for older people. And, you know, there are a couple of other requirements. In 1995, during the Clinton administration, uh, Congress, uh, passed the, uh, HOPA, which is Housing for Older Persons Act. And that's essentially expanding that exception to the Fair Housing Act. So instead of being 62 years old and having specific facilities designed for the community living there, they pushed that down seven years to 55 as an age, a minimum age. You could, uh, establish a, a retirement community and, uh, got, did away with the specific, uh, facilities requirement and then adopted this 80/20 rule. And so, um, that's where we are now. And the way I see this working would be, um, this community could fall within HOPA as long as it's marketed as 55 or older, as long as it has, you know, the advertising reflects 55 or older, written rules, covenants and deeds, and that's very important, I'll get to that in a minute. The maintenance of the community is, and consistency, actual practices of the facility, public posting of the facilities of retirement community in common areas. These are, if they sound somewhat boring, it's because they're out of the, the law and the code of federal register, but it's essentially the guidelines, the six guidelines that, that the HUD will look at in determining whether a community falls within the HOPA exception. So every two years, there's an audit essentially by the Secretary of HUD. You have to have documentation showing that you're following these procedures, that you're restricting age. And so you, it doesn't all just go away once you get the HOPA exception. It's, it's a, every two years verification process with, with data. It's basically census data on the community. So that's a framework for HOPA. My firm does a lot of homeowner association work representing boards. And, uh, to the extent there's any concern about this slipping back, you know, from 100% down to 60% and the exception goes away and then, you know, all bets are off. The people that are going to be moving here, uh, initially, the, the covenants or the declarations, I've got one from one of the communities. And it, you know, the declarations that are filed in the public record with the Register of Deeds and that attach to all properties within that community that govern the rules of the community, the HOA, this one has an age restriction. It's actually in, you're controlled, your property is controlled by the, by the recorded declarations or they're also known as, uh, covenants, uh, declaration of covenants or a number of names. But that's what's, that's the law of the community. And, uh, my experiences with, uh, boards, particularly, um, folks that are retired, involvement in the community is very, they're very active and they're looking at, a kid, a, a, you know, five-year-old is going to stand out in one of these communities. I, I don't see, based on my experience, a huge risk of this all, of the HOPA exception going away. I think there's going to be strict enforcement, particularly with people buy in and buy into this idea of a retirement community. I think there's, it's going to be strictly self enforced. I think that the value of the retirement community is attached, you know, to the people's property. They're not going to, um, let that slip. So theoretically, it is possible to lose HOPA, but I think that there has to be a decision made by the, by the, um, board of the association to let that happen. There are other factors, I, I think, that benefit from a retirement community and this is stepping a little bit out of HOPA, but, uh, again, the schools, there's not going to be an impact on the schools. Traffic, I think, is going to be less. And, uh, you know, the studies that I've seen, and I'm certainly, I'm an attorney, I'm not, I'm not a demographics expert or a public planner, but it looks to me like they improve, uh, the economics of the community that they're in. With that said, I'd open, uh, I'm open to any questions that the board may have. Yes, sir?
For, um, for several different reasons, um, I think time constraint for one of them, we, we've got 10 minutes here before we start it and I'm not trying to hurry you up at all. And, and maybe just to cut to the chase, a, a lot of the things that you're, you're talking about are all, I, I think, good stuff. I don't, I, it doesn't really weigh on my mind one, one way or the other, you know, whether you're, you know, 20%, you know, I, I think it's primarily going to be a, 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 age target or age restricted neighborhood. And if there's a five-year-old in there, I don't think it'd be the end of the world if there was a five-year-old in there. I think really what you have to do, it's Tommy, correct? Tommy, I really, I think, I, I, I think, again, I think you're putting it in a pretty good spot and, and I live in, um, in, in Bonterra, so, you know, the spot that you're putting it in is right off the Toll Road, it's right off the, uh, the access road, off the Toll Road. So as far as accessibility is concerned, to get there, I can see that being a positive for you. And that can be a positive in a time when this council has a whole lot of pressure not to build new houses, okay? That, that is, there is a lot of pressure in this town and it's put on the town council not to build, uh, homes because they're sick and tired of traffic. So I really think you have that going for you. But, but what I really think you, you, you should do, and this is not me telling you to do, but what I think you should do and I wish we would do is the town would, would do, was to have a meeting on that side of town, pretty much well in the same place that we had, uh,
Carriage House.
The carriage house over there and invite all the neighborhoods from, from over there and bring them in, in there and come in and sit down with council and give them your best shot.
I have actually already started that process. I spoke with Katie, I got, um.
Can you step up to the mic?
The HO, got the HOA president's emails for all the surrounding neighborhoods. Bob Olin will be getting one. And I'm actually going to get the, uh, Sardis Baptist Church Fellowship Hall set it up for one night next week and just invite whoever wants to come from the surrounding neighborhoods and, and answer all the questions, have the drawings.
And I really think, and I don't know that if you've gone through the town, Tommy, with doing that, but I think you really should and.
I've been talking with Katie, who I'm sure has talked to Rox.
Right, and, and also, uh, inform the council, you know, when it is and, and not like a last minute thing. I wouldn't, you know, say, you know, hey, because I, we, we don't know about it now and if you, you tell us next week, you know, and someone's going to show up.
I just got the information from Katie.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to help you out.
Oh, I understand, and I saw that on you guys' comments, so that's what, the way we were proceeding.
I really think that would be important.
When I send these emails to the HOA presidents, I'll copy Rox or Katie and, and they can pass it on to you guys.
If, if these council members can go to a meeting where you get primarily most of the people from that side of town, and I think you'll get a lot of people from that side of town.
Only two of you, though, right?
Well, no, we, we can all arrange it to where, where we can all go. If, if whoever wants to go can go. But that, that's a key, if, if you see positive, that makes our job easier.
Well, one of the things that I think that would benefit that is, um, at that particular meeting, if, especially if council attends that meeting, we post it, make sure we're in compliance and all that stuff. But it's to really sit and listen to the comments of the residents of that area. So therefore we can. the residents of that area, so therefore we can make an informed decision. You, it wouldn't be us asking you questions, it would be they asking you, we hearing their responses, and also giving the residents a chance after that particular meeting, or sometime, you know, after, in that same, at that same event, to actually talk to us and share either their concerns, or some of the things that they'd like to see changed, improved, and so forth, getting their feedback. And that way we can, we, so therefore, we all sort of have that same information at the same time.
I understand, and, and keep in mind, though, that we did do the two required public involvement meetings, and notices went to every single person, we had three people.
The problem is kind of on our side because of the limited distance that it carries, we're trying to make changes there.
Right.
But if you're, if you're in Bonterra, Philstone Farms, and Annandale, as others are three.
Right, those are the three.
If you're getting some, some kind of
But I think they also, each household, I think, got notice of the
How, how did that notice get out?
Public involvement meetings.
How, how does that notice get out? How did you get that?
The town sends it out.
So that wouldn't
So it wouldn't have been the whole neighborhood, right?
So I, I live in Annandale, and I, I didn't get notified, and I get notified
Well, I will be sending that out.
Right, and next door would be another way to get it out, and, and, you know, that thousand people will get it. You'll get a packed house, I'll guarantee you.
Okay, that's good.
So hit 'em with your best shot, you know, that's what I'm saying.
What if it's non-HOA?
What if it's?
The house.
The house. The homeowner.
The homeowner.
You're reaching out.
I was wondering if all three of those neighborhoods had an HOA.
No, meaning that there's houses around there without
Now, I live in a, unit is 500 homes, and it's not an HOA.
Well, I was told these do, and those are the three, I was told.
Well, we, we can get it out, you put it on next door, and, and spread the word or something.
When you go on next door, you don't necessarily have to select only dwellings that are just there, you can actually select basically a really big area that includes areas, developments without HOAs, including Beacon Hills, for instance. So that's another way. And then people talk on Facebook, they'll, once you have in a meeting, and it's about a new development, word will spread.
So has the meeting been set?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm gonna do that tomorrow.
Okay, and you're gonna work with?
How many days do you guys need so that more can, more than two of you can show up?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, but I think the council would be more comfortable if you can give them a week's notice.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to set it up for next week.
What day next week, sorry?
It's a good question, I didn't know whether I wanted to
Wednesday's probably not a good night, but
Send out a reply from the presidents, or just say, this is the day.
Next week would No, no, it's not, no, this, this weekend's holiday.
This is the weekend of holiday week.
Mondays, Monday, yeah.
Right, I'd say Thursday, I'd say Thursday'd be a great day to do it.
Thursday would probably be a better day.
Okay, I'll set it up for next Thursday.
Rox, you'll follow through with him? Is that something Rox follows through with?
Can look at it.
As far as, or is that Mike, that he'll be communicating with, to make sure that it's confirmed? Thank you. Mr. Seder?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir. For me, or?
For you, sir. If I'm 56 years old and I have two daughters that live with me, am I restricted from living in that neighborhood?
You, you are, if you're 56 and you have two daughters that live with you, you, how old are your daughters? They're gonna be under 55.
Yes.
And so
I hope so.
Unless they've really engineered, hey, who knows with modern science? HOPA requires at least one occupant, the 80-20 rule looks at occupants, and for that exemption to apply, you only need one person in the house to be 55 or, or over. However, you can have restrictions in your deed that prohibit people under that age from living there. And that's really the purpose of the 20 rule, was to allow for some flexibility for the grandparent that has a child whose parents have, have passed away, so that the community has that, that ability to make those adjustments. But, but yeah, so you, you, these communities can restrict age pretty broadly, under the law, so.
And, and my question is traffic-related, so
Right, and our, that's the reason our intent is to deed this thing, and the property deeds and the, all of that are gonna be restricted. The 20% will just be, I think we have to do that legally for hardship cases only, but it's not gonna be a, a matter of somebody comes to buy a house, and he's 56, and he's got two 15-year-old daughters, that's not hardship, so they would not be able to, to buy that.
I, I think that it's even, it's one of those things where you read the law, and it's even more broad for, for the community. So the, the 20% is designed so if you have somebody pass away, and then that property is, you know, handed down over time, and you have somebody living there temporarily that's not 55, the community could still remove them, under the covenants. So, there's no, you know, they can do it. That's the whole purpose, is familial, familial status, you're exempted from that, from that law. And so, you can have a very aggressive age police, if you will, to keep young people out.
Well, that's completely up to, to the HOA and who moves in there, because, I mean, we could talk about this, go back and forth, but, you know, I, you know, if, if a man moves in and he's 70, and he's got a 40-year-old daughter and son that are 42, it, you know, I, I almost think it's wrong to say, well, you can't live here, you know, you can't, you can't live because you're not 55 years old, you can't. But that's, I guess, for y'all to work out
Right.
Your covenants, and, 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 I mean, it, it doesn't matter what I think, so
Think of it like this, think of plantation estates in Matthews, huge place. You go over there at 40 years old and tell them you wanna buy a thing, they're gonna say, no, I'm sorry, can't do it.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're out of time.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Yes.
Could you copy me on that as well?
I will.
Thank you.
We're gonna take five minutes, and then we'll convene the official meeting. Council, your mics are now live. At this time, if you'd please place your cellphones on silent or vibrate. If you have to take a call, please step outside. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018. At this time, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Girl Scouts out there? Whenever you're ready, ladies. Thank you. At this time, if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence, if you would, please say a prayer for those students that were killed this past week in a school shooting in Texas, and another one in Georgia. This tragedy hits close to home, as one of the exchange students in our group was one of the victims in Texas. So please, at this time, would you, please bow your head. Thank you, you may be seated. Thank you, girls, that was wonderful. Do you have the public comment sheet? Can I have it? At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Sure. Thanks for the upfront, let me know. On item number six, add B, Committee Meeting Liaison Update. On 10D, Board and Committee Appointments, Council? You don't wanna do, okay, yeah, I'll need to do the rest, too.
Is council okay with the additions? At this time, if there's no other additions or deletions, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve, all in favor. That would be unanimous. That brings us to our presentations. Give me a minute, there's quite a few of them. The first one is a proclamation for the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame, which hurled its inaugural induction of 22 veterans into the North Carolina Military Hall of Fame, which I believe in this country, we now have 18 of them, 17 of them are online, Atlanta being the only one with bricks and mortar so far. I had the pleasure of attending the ceremonies, and two of our local residents, Mr. Crump was inducted, and Mr. Garland Denny was inducted, which was received by his son Chuck, since Garland passed away in 2015. So every year at the Fourth of July Parade, I have proclaimed the day in honor of a different veterans group, to try and maybe bridge the gap between our students and those that have served, so they can put a face to it. And I didn't see any more fitting than to add this proclamation for the July 4th Parade, for whereas there are over 792,000 veterans living in the state of North Carolina, whereas thousands of deceased veterans are buried in cemeteries in the state of North Carolina, and whereas many North Carolina veterans, living and dead, have performed innumerable deeds of service to the citizens of this nation and this state. And whereas the purpose of the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame, a nonprofit organization, organized under the laws of the state of North Carolina, is to highlight and emphasize the honor brought to our state and nation by the sacrifices of our veterans and their families. And whereas those instrumental in founding the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame are deserving of recognition and appreciation, and chief among them being Sergeant First Class David Eugene Brody. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, recognize and commend the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame and Sergeant First Class David Eugene Brody, and do by hereby proclaim July 4th, 2018, in honor of the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame Weekend. Witness my hand and official seal this date, 22nd day of May, 2018. And considering that this Monday is Memorial Day, if we could recognize any veterans that have served, and any of those that have lost a family member in battle, so, thank you for that. Next one is our new business recognition, recognition. Michelle, are you here from Cinnaholic? Oh, a new addition, welcome, if you could. Or if you can't, are you okay coming forward?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, could we give each business just a moment to come up to the podium and introduce themselves?
Oh, yeah.
Let us know how to find out some more information about their business.
Yeah, you have a minute, come to the podium. Cinnaholic is a new business in Indian Trail, just opened
One of my employees. Hi, my name is Michelle Henriquez, and with my husband, Victoria Bellatini, we own the Cinnaholic, Sun Valley Commons Shopping Center. Cinnaholic is a all gourmet, 100% vegan cinnamon rolls. You can customize your own cinnamon rolls by picking a different frosting flavor. We have up to 20 frosting flavors, and we have toppings, like pie crumble or peanut butter cups, which we make in-house. Like I say, the store is 100% vegan, we have cookies, brownies, you're welcome to come, and thank you for having us, we love being here in Indian Trail.
And we'd like to welcome you to Indian Trail. Our next would be W.C. Hair, Snowball Cabin, are you here, W.C.? There you are.
So I'm, I'm W.C. Hair, my wife and I own the Snowball Cabin. It's New Orleans-style shaved ice, and there's about 80 flavors, but I'm kinda slow on math because I'm an N.C. State guy, but I think there's something like 300 or 400 combinations potentially. But it's, it's not a snow cone, it's, it's a New Orleans-style, they freeze the blocks, and then you sweat the blocks, and then you shave it really, really fine. If any of you've been there, hopefully you enjoyed it. But we're real excited to be here, and look forward to being here a long time, so.
That brings us to Manish and Rosni, the new Spotless Cleaners, welcome.
Hi, I'm Manish, this is my wife.
I'm Rosni, and we really appreciate coming to Indian Trail Township. I want to just give a little, before I give my commercial, I would like to say something about Indian Trail Township. Michael, Roberta, Kathy, Katie, Maya, everybody was so helpful for me, but this was our first business, we didn't know what to do, we went to Union County, but Indian Trail has been the best in helping us, and they were, they just came through for us. So I really appreciate that, I appreciate Mayor Alvarez to stop by, and that was very overwhelming and good welcome for us. We are a dry cleaning pickup and drop-off station, and we are next to Publix in Hanfield, shops of Hanfield Village, and we just want to earn business of each and everyone in this community, and make y'all keep happy and keep your clothes clean. Thank you.
Viva Chicken, are you here? There you are.
Hi, I'm Brent Nash, the general manager at the new Viva Chicken at Sun Valley Commons. We're a Peruvian rotisserie joint that's fast casual, but committed to high-quality food with five-star service. We're just glad to be a part of the community and hope to continue to build a good partnership. Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez?
Yes.
Under, I should have, we, we have someone else here, a new business here tonight, we don't have a platform, but if they may, it's American Bank and Trust, if they may come up and
Yeah, sure, that's fine, if council's okay with that?
My name's Steve Barnes, I appreciate the council being, inviting me tonight here to speak. Got some exciting news for the county and the town here. We're putting together a small, local community bank in Union County, and the proposed name is American Community Bank. We've made several trips to the banking commissioner in the state, and they're really excited about opening a new, new financial institution in town. Discussion started about a year ago about doing this, and it's slowly coming to attrition. They gave us the green light about two weeks ago to start our offering circular, and that's in the process of being done now. And so, probably it'll come out in the media, probably in about two weeks, but I think the thing, the word now is proposed bank, so until we raise the capital, it will be opening up. And there will be a location in Indian Trail eventually, and so, really looking forward to it. I'm a native of Indian Trail, lived here all my life. Randy Adcock will be the president and CEO, and he's a good friend of mine, and he's seated here in the audience tonight, and he'd probably like to say a few words, too. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, again, my name's Randy Adcock, I'm a lifelong Union County resident, south of Monroe, Parkwood High School, Wingate College. We think it's important for, for Union County to have a locally-owned community bank. We will open in Monroe, and then we also have an opportunity to go to Wingate, which is an unbanked area at this time. But we think it's important to, to have local people that, that are bankers, making decisions for local businesses, and we think, we plan to be a, a good steward of our funds, we wanna be a good neighbor to Indian Trail, we've, I've asked Steve to join me in this effort, and you can't get any more hometown than than Steve, so appreciate the support that we'll get. We'll get Steve up here. It's kind of like, you heard that old show, Have Gun Will Travel, We Have Banking Will Travel. Steve will be up in this area, he'll have an office at home in Monroe and his truck. And so appreciate all your support and thank you for letting us come for you tonight.
When you get a location, we'll give you a plaque. Okay, at this time, we're going to invite our Girl Scouts up for their presentation.
Dear Mayor Alvarez and ladies and gentlemen of the Indian Trail Town Council, on behalf of Girl Scout Troop 2297, we are requesting that June 16th, 2018, be proclaimed as straw-free day in the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina. In recognition of the importance of the problem of plastic pollution in the lives of our citizens, we ask that the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, institute a proclamation for the straw-free day on June 16th, 2018. We are requesting a straw-free day because this year, we completed our Junior Girl Scout, It's Your Planet, Love It, Get Moving journey. We learned about pollution, recycling, composting, and sustainable energy resources. Part of our journey requires us to take action to address a problem in our community. We learned about the problem of plastic pollution and we found that plastic straws cause huge problems for our environment. Every day in the U.S. alone, 500 million disposable straws are used. That is enough straws to fill Yankee Stadium nine times every year. It is enough straws to annually circle the globe 2.5 times.
We also, we also learned that straws, like most plastics, do not biodegrade, they can stay in our environment for centuries. They are made from oil and fossil fuels, so they cannot be recycled easily and add to our global carbon footprint. Basically, every piece of plastic ever manufactured in the past 150 years is still in our environment today.
We learned that the oceans, plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals every year. Nearly 700 species, including endangered ones, are known to have been affected by it. Marine animals eat microplastics which are poison, choke or suffocate them.
Also, we learned straws are very dangerous to seabirds and turtles who swallow the straws and die. Because of food chains, humans are exposed to more toxic plastic chemicals when we eat the fish who have eaten these plastics. By current estimates, scientists believe that by 2050, there will be more plastics in our ocean than fish. Plastic straws are among the top 10 items picked up in beach cleanups.
Skipping plastic straws is an easy way to help our environment, but how can you help? First, you can tell restaurants that you don't need a straw and sip your drink instead. Or you can use reusable glass, stainless steel, or bamboo straws.
You could ask your favorite restaurant to stop automatically offering straws to every customer or to consider not using straws at all. You can tell other members of the community about the problem of straws and plastic pollution so they can choose to reduce their use of straws, too.
Have you had your last straw? It's time to join the straw-free movement. We look forward to working with your office on this important issue and in representing our Indian Trail community in this important global campaign. Thank you for your consideration.
And it just so happens, I have a proclamation here. It magically appeared in my email. Whereas our community and communities across the world are facing the problem of plastic pollution which harms our waterways, oceans, and animal species each year. One million seabirds and 100,000 marine animals die from ingesting plastics like straws. Whereas American Jews, 500 million straws every day and they cannot be easily recycled. Americans use enough straws yearly to circle the globe 2.5 times. Whereas plastic straws are in the top 10 most common litter items found in the 8 million tons of plastic dump in our ocean each year. Whereas we must join efforts of other cities across the globe to bring awareness to the issue of one-time-use plastic pollution and our community to skip the straw or use stainless steel or paper straws instead of plastic. Whereas we must reduce our use of disposable plastics such as straws to be good environmental stewards in our local and global community. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, June 16th, 2018, a straw-free day in the Town of Indian Trail and urge all citizens to become familiar with the problem of plastic pollution and I hereby pledge with our community to support the reduction of plastic waste and to participate in straw-free day in the Town of Indian Trail on June 16th, 2018. Question is, will the Counsel join me in that? Yes, see? Okay, that was easy. Who's your representative? Come get your copy. And if we could ask nicely to the gentleman sitting over there, Mr. Parks, would you mind notifying with a press release for the newspaper for this auspicious event?
It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you. Okay. Forgive me, okay. Okay. Yep. At this time, I'm going to open public comments. As a reminder, these meetings are live and can be heard on the Internet. Audience as well as Counsel, please use proper decorum. You are entitled to three minutes. You cannot allocate your minutes to another person and please keep your comments civil in manner. When you get to the podium, please state your name and your three minutes will begin. Our first speaker is Mr. John Martin. Councilman John Martin, welcome to Indian Trail, Stallings Councilmember.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'm coming tonight to request and/or invite the Town of Indian Trail to partner with the Town of Stallings, first by holding a joint council meeting to discuss the joint opportunities and joint problems that the town, I think, can work together to solve for our mutual citizens. Primarily, the problem with transportation. We know NCDOT is, at best, an opportunity on its good days and at worst, some other things. And, but I also think we can build on one of the strengths that both towns have in our Parks and Rec Department. We recently held a Mutual Earth Day celebration, I think went very well, and I think we both have great Parks and Rec Department and we can work together to build something even more special for both the communities. So, like I said, I wanted to keep it brief tonight, but I wanted to introduce myself and thank you guys for having me.
There was one other thing, Mr. Martin, sorry to interrupt, that we had spoken about with issues going on in our schools. We can work together and jointly be a drop-off for school supplies donated to Union County schools and start promoting that jointly and encourage other towns in our county to do the same to help with the less fortunate students.
Yep.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Any Counsel rebuttal for Mr. Martin? Since that's what's next on our agenda. Any Counsel feedback?
No, I think it's a great idea. We've been discussing this amongst ourselves here on Counsel and already, we have a few members that have reached out to other municipalities and just really appreciate you coming here tonight, Mr. Martin, and extending the invitation. And thank you all for allowing us to also attend some of your meetings recently. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike?
John, you've probably have heard from Linda that we are putting meetings together already. We're going to switch it tonight for a while so that we can bring in more Counsel members, so looking forward to it and be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll close public comments and open up the law enforcement update for Captain Cobal. But as he makes his way to the podium. Mayor? Did I miss something? Oh, yeah. Oh, that's put under there. Excuse me, Captain. You've been pushed back one. Counsel Meeting Liaison Update.
Aight.
Mr. C.
Why don't we go to A, Mayor, the Counsel.
Counsel feedback. Okay, go ahead.
Is that what we're?
I had asked for that already, but did you have some more feedback?
Is that not, is that, I'm confused. I thought that was a separate.
No, I added item number A, so it gives Counsel a chance to provide any feedback or comments after the public makes any comment, so.
Yeah, so this is something totally separate.
Yes.
Right, this is something separate, Mayor.
Counsel feedback for public comments.
Okay, and I actually asked to have that put on there, that's how I knew that.
That's right.
Anyway, I just wanted to, I know we had a meeting a while back and we decided that the Counsel could give feedback after public comments, so. The only thing I just wanted to add to that and get approval from Counsel is that at times, if we have two or three or four different people come up, that the Counsel, we'll just call it Counsel Feedback to Public Comments and, you know, hopefully it will be quick, but it will not be, hopefully, a three-minute thing because if we're answering questions on, and I feel like it's very important to answer the questions that people come up and ask in public comments. For years, you know, somebody could come up and they could say anything they wanted to say, but the Counsel never, never had anything to say back to them. So if we want to answer some questions and want to have some feedback, there's just no three-minute time period. It'll just be a separate agenda item, Counsel Feedback to Public Comments. So that's my, that's my proposal.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. If Counsel doesn't have a problem with that, that's your decision. All right, Counsel?
Do you want me to make a motion to do that?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion for that. Make it official.
I'll make a motion to add a, add Counsel Feedback to Public Comments.
Ms. Cohen's made a motion to add Counsel Feedback as a permanent agenda item to Public Comments. All in favor?
Good.
Okay, that would be unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Now we're up to the Committee Meeting Liaison Update.
As requested by Mr. McIntyre, I added this item. Just for FYI, we would like, Mr. McIntyre would like to bring it back next meeting, so it can be discussed and put before Counsel. And simply, many Counsel members attending a lot of committees and meetings and the intent of this is to get feedback from the liaison of these committees so Counsel could share. So this, we will go ahead and add it for next meeting and I think it'll be every meeting. It'll be an item that will be on the agenda every meeting. So this is FYI, Mr. McIntyre.
Do we need to make a? Do we need to make a motion?
Keep it consistent.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to add the item 6B to the agenda going forward and we'll pick it up on the next meeting. The Committee Meeting Liaison Update, I think that way the public can get a chance to hear what has happened in the public forum. So I'm going to make that motion to add that.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion at Committee Meeting Liaison. All in favor? Or did you have?
I've got a question. So, in what form is this going to be? So if a Counsel member sits on a committee, they will come back and talk about that committee?
Yes.
Of what happened?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Motion passes. Sorry for the delay, Captain Cobal. As he makes his way to the podium, in case no one noticed, last week was National Law Enforcement Officers Week. If you just indulge and let's give him a round of applause and standing ovation for what they're doing.
So it's definitely not for me, it's for all these guys that work up here. I'm going to be, well, I'm not going to be brief, I'm not going to lie to you. I got a few things to talk about. So we're remodeling our building still, waiting on Windstream, they're working on the fiber connection, getting some carpet samples so that we can pick out some coloring because we don't know what we're doing with that. So we're going to pick out some paint colors and some carpet colors here in the next couple of days. We've been working on the front lobby and getting some doors rearranged and stuff, so looking forward to getting done. It's about like remodeling your house with your wife and it's getting exhausting at this point, so looking forward to getting done, but we're glad and we think that we're going to be, made a real good improvement on that building and looking forward to having you guys over whenever we get, we'll have a little open house. So this past weekend, we had a Toyota truck reported stolen from a business parking lot on Unionville Indian Trail Road. The keys had been left in the truck and it was unlocked. The deputies that went out there, after further looking around, found other vehicles in the same parking lot that had been entered. One of them had a handgun taken from it and another one had a gift card valued at $1,500 taken from it. So my public announcement for that is, lock your stuff up. Take your guns out of your cars, I'm happy for you to have them as long as you're legal to have them, but take it with you because you need to be responsible with it. Monday, 1:30 a.m., deputies working that night, discovered several businesses, you might have seen it on Channel 9 last night, Jack's Pizza, China Two Subway, and Little Caesar's were all victims here in Indian Trail. Matthews and Charlotte during the same timeframe had the same type MO on the break-ins and there were, all of the investigators were working together, but we're pretty confident that those are all going to be the same crew that was operating out of Charlotte and came down here and skipped over Stallings for some reason, I don't know why, but the, we tried to push them back towards Stallings, but I'm just kidding. So around 3:30 last Wednesday, Anthony Mason, and you guys know Anthony, he's been worked up here at the meetings before, about that tall, Anthony and Logan Starms were responding to an alarm call over near Sun Valley at a cell phone store near the McDonald's. And as they pulled in, Anthony saw two men take off running and so him and Logan were able, well, Logan was able to apprehend one of the gentlemen. The next time you see Anthony, ask him where his guy is, but the, all in total, they got 31-year-old Preston Peyton charged with felony breaking and entering and also injured a personal property. They didn't get anything inside the store by the time they set the alarm off and got to going on it, but thought it was pretty good that they were able to run them down and had a quick response to that alarm call. I included on your front page a little bit of arrest history at Walmart. Give me a fudge or two on those numbers because all of that is dependent upon what is entered by the people that are doing the arrest report. So sometimes you get people that may not actually enter the exact address point for a location, especially when you have multiple businesses over in an area such as Walmart. But these were pretty much all tied to the Walmart big box retail store that, just kind of tracking some stuff and mainly because the past couple of days, we've been over there more and more and more. So we're looking at just keeping an eyeball on that and just kind of watching it. And I just bring that to your attention just for future planning purposes so that we all kind of see the effects, you know, because we, they're a customer of ours as well. But we're already at 53, and that was as of 6 o'clock this evening, I pulled the last numbers, I printed these out, and we're at 53 arrests over there so far this year. 63 total last year. A lot plays into that. Last year, Walmart came up with this idea that they were going to play a video for people that they caught stealing over there and the video was going to tell you stealing was bad and then people were never going to steal again. They paid a lot of money to a company that produced this video for them and after a short period of time, they figured out it didn't work. So they didn't call us a lot last year and the early part of this year, so really, these numbers for 2018 really didn't start coming in until about February, which is kind of scary. But you can hire somebody over there in loss prevention who's real aggressive and we get over there a lot, or you can hire somebody over there who doesn't have a good eye for what they're doing and a lot of stuff slips by them. So at the end of the day, just wanted you guys to be aware of where a lot of our activity is spent here lately. Kevin Susiewicz, Sr., some of you guys might remember Kevin, he's the first guy we put on the motorcycle up here, the dual sport bikes, a couple of years ago, trying to cut down on the response times and make it a little bit easier to get around from calls to service. Kevin's retiring next Wednesday, so we're losing a great asset. He's been with the office just shy of 10 years. He's an Army veteran, retired from the Army before he got into law enforcement, spent some time overseas doing some contract law enforcement work over there. some time overseas doing some contract law enforcement work over there, and we're gonna hate we're missing Kevin, but he's been a rock. He's just one of those employees that's mature. You don't have to watch over him, you don't have to watch after him, and you can send him to anything, and he's what I would call is my one-man army. I can send him out to the worst-case scenario by himself, and he'll handle it and take care of it. So, on the next page here, we had... Some of you might have seen in the news, we had some home invasion crimes that were going on around not only Indian Trail, but also down around Wesley Chapel and then Monroe, and also in Mint Hill. Mint Hill by far had the worst incident where they actually had somebody kidnapped and brought to an ATM machine and forced to get money out of an ATM machine. We, working with Mint Hill and with Monroe, we're, you know, pretty certain that these are all gonna be the same people, happened the same night, same type of description on the vehicle, description from the victims and all, but, you know, just the only thing I can preach to people right now while we're working on this case is just be aware of your surroundings and be aware. If you're outside at nighttime working, you know, we live in a good, quiet community, but at the same time, you get on this road over here and you'll be somewhere else real quick. And so, a lot of these elements are coming from other places and coming into our good and nice community, and we try to keep them out of there, but these roads bring them in just as easy as they bring into commuter traffic. So, just, you know, awareness, just pay attention to what you're doing if you're outside by yourself, you know, make sure that you got your eyes open and nobody can sneak up on you. And if you need to run back in the house, if you need to keep your cellphone with you, you have your car keys, just got your panic button on there, thousand different things, and I'm not gonna sit here and try to tell everybody good ideas because you gotta think for yourself sometimes. But, you know, I tell it like this to my wife, if you're on the way home and you're gonna stop and get gas and your gut tells you don't stop there, there's a reason why. That gut keeps us alive every night when we come out here, far and above all the training we get, and everybody's got that gut feeling. So, if you go outside your house, it's dark, you just don't feel right, something doesn't feel right, get on back inside, you know, and if you need to, call us. And we'd much rather come out, check the neighborhood out, make sure everything's good, because if you don't call us, then we feel like everything was good. I'd much rather you be at ease by calling us and letting our guys come out, shine some lights around if you hear anything. We've had some car thefts, and then we've had some cars given away by local dealers to people that they thought was who was buying the car. But I included several screenshots on our Facebook page of some pictures that we put out for, you know, hoping to get some identification on some guys here recently. But we do have a large dealership, a large amount of dealerships up here in town, starting to see more and more. I remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the Camaro that the guys came into town, bought, but it had a GPS tracker on it. You know, we wish all those, we could be as lucky with, that they would have a tracking device on there. These guys are coming in and they're buying these cars online and showing up, you know, real quick and smooth talkers, and the salesmen's are, you know, trying to get this nice car sold to somebody and trying to push the deal through, and before you know it, they've pulled a scam over on them and taken off with a car, and nobody knows who they really are. So, you know, we continue to see that around here, but we've been doing more and more proactive, going out to our dealerships and trying to talk to them and give them some helpful hints on things like that so that they can keep from being a fraud victim on those cases. So, does anybody got any questions before I run back here and sit down? Thank you guys for your time. Yes, Miss Shirley?
Do we ever have like a self-defense program here that the citizens could commit?
You wanna teach it?
No. I'm gonna tase you.
So, we do offer not necessarily a self-defense program, but we do offer some, you know, tips and things like that that communities can get together, or civic groups, or church groups can call our office and ask for somebody to come out and give some general safety tips. I kind of feel shy about, you know, one of our guys teaching Shirley how to put somebody in the headlock because she may do it to David tomorrow, but from a liability standpoint, we don't necessarily get involved in things like that, but you do have a lot of good places around Indian Trail that are teaching, you know, self-defense and martial arts and different things like that. So, a lot of good avenues around here to go, and, you know, from a business standpoint, a lot of good places around here if somebody was looking for something like that, or a church group was looking for something like that, they could probably reach out and get a group discount or something from somebody that does that kind of training, so...
Jason, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, I don't know if you can name the Mercedes dealer that took a check from somebody and gave them a Mercedes and didn't check the check out?
It was good to see you all tonight. Every car dealer's liable to have it. I mean, I hate to say it, but every...
Really? They take checks and not just...
Every car dealer's liable to be subjected to a scam. And honestly, you know, things nowadays, you know, we all remember the old driver's license that was laminated, you know. You know, nowadays, there's so, so complex way of printing things out on computers, and you can go on Amazon and buy, you know, an identification card maker and make a card. Somebody could probably go on there in the next 20 minutes and print out a card that said Town of Indian Trail on there and had their picture and put Town Manager, you know, and walk into a business around here and propose that they were the Town Manager. Really, you gotta do your homework in vetting and checking and verifying. A lot of these things are prevented whenever the consumer themselves, who is the fraud victim, has gone out and got some type of service to put onto their account to where they get a notification if somebody's trying to buy a car or a house in their name. I've actually known people to be victims of identity theft where somebody bought a house in their name. So, that's... We worry about somebody using our debit card at the gas station, trying to have an house, you know, that you didn't know you had that was in your name, and pull that credit score whenever no payment was made. But, you know, honestly, if, you know, we get calls from out of town where people say, "Hey, my ID's being used right now at such-and-such car dealer." And those are the ones that where we're able to go over and intercept and work with the dealership prior to the person getting there, because most of the time, they're trying to do an online transaction because there's all this... When you go online shopping for a car now, you can chat with the dealership through text and stuff. So, most of these guys are using that so that they don't have to have face-to-face contact, and then they say, "Okay, I'm out of town on business. I'll be back in town on Sunday. I'm in a real big hurry. Can you have the car ready at 6:30 or 7:00?" And then they're gonna run right in, try to act like they're a real busy businessman and get out of the showroom with the keys in their hand, and they talk a big game, you know, and they're smooth talkers. So, you know, when you've got somebody that's got a LifeLock or something like that on their personal identification to where, hey, their social security number flagged, like the one we recently had done in Columbia, South Carolina, that called one of our guys and said, "My stuff's being used right now at this car dealership." We were able to get over there and intercept and find out that, yes, somebody's on the way in about an hour and a half to pick up this car, and we said, "Hey, call them back and tell them you polished the wheels up on it. It'll be ready for them." And we were ready for them too. So, you know, that's the ones where it's fun because we're able to prevent somebody. These are, you know, we can kind of laugh and kind of think, "Well, who in the world would do that?" But at the end of the day, a lot of times, the real victim to all these things like this is the guy that's sitting at home in Columbia, South Carolina, that realizes that, hey, my credit was used because somebody, you know, my identification was compromised and my social security number and everything like that was used. And they're the true victim. The car dealership can recover from letting a car go, you know. It's unfortunate, but they're a business and they can recover from that. But the guy that had his credit messed up and used, because that's not gonna be the first car he bought, you know, a lot of these are using the same... If they get David's information and they make an ID that looks like you and they start going in and out of there, they're gonna buy five or six cars that quick before they burn up your ID to where it can't be used any longer because of your credit, and then they're on to something else, so... Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. There's no changes. I need a motion to approve, please. Ms. Shirley's made a motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. No public hearings. That brings us to old business. Formal presentation of proposed fiscal year 1819 budget. Mr. Seadeck, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With pleasure, we would like to present the proposed budget for FY 1819. And I also like to thank staff for all the hard work that they did, every one of you. I really appreciate it. Jim and I, we finished putting it together at 2:00 today. There's only probably one small item that we would like to add to it within the next couple of weeks. It would be just explanation for the CIP projects. You know, we're gonna add some pictures and explanation and give you update. Simply, what we did this year, we just changed the format, changed the tables, make it easy to be read, and it's not different from the information that we had last year. Couple of changes with the fee schedules, and we incorporated that in the schedules, and we did include everything we shared with council, and what you're looking at on the screen is included in the book. So, if it's possible, we would like your comments within a couple of weeks. We're planning on putting a public notice. We're required to put a public notice for 10 days, but if we could do it for 14 days, we'll come back next town, council meeting, and if you have any questions or comments, we'll do it then. And if you're okay with everything, we didn't have any public comments, we will ask for your adoption to the budget. But we do have the info on the screen right now in case you have any questions, but everything we have on the screen is included in the books. We did not make many, any changes from the last time we shared it with you, except just moving items, you know, amounts up and down a little bit based on our communication with North Carolina DOT and working with milestones and testing and all that, but it should be the same what we shared with you last time.
Any questions for Mr. Seadeck? Okay. Patrick? Is that all?
That's it.
Okay.
Is council okay with our schedule to come back in a couple of weeks for adoption?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
That brings us to projects. Item B. Mr. Seadeck?
We do have, this is a quick update. We do have two projects, actually, two agreements that we received from North Carolina DOT, and one of them is for the uptown projects, and the other one is for the Crooked Creek multi-use trail. And simply, what the documents, it's a typical documents that they have with every jurisdiction. Simply, it lists the process and how staff needs to work with them and the amount of funding that we're getting from them. So, all what we need tonight is just for Mr. Mayor to get your signature and have the town clerk stamp it and send it back to them.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the Brandon Oaks median, which is brought back to us from last meeting. Mr. Seadeck, do you want to take the forefront?
Yes. Last meeting, we met with one resident that lives at Brandon Oak, and I'm sorry, we could not reach him to be with us tonight, but we did what we committed to council. We went out there and did the measurements in front of his house and the island. We looked at other islands too. We generated a cost estimate, and we would like to share that with you tonight. So, do we have... That's it. All right. The gentleman that came in and presented before council is, he lives on the bottom side of the screen. We found out that, we found out that he had, the house had a space for two-car garage and a driveway for two other cars, and the length of that driveway is, all the way to the curb and gutter is approximately 35 feet. The width of the both entrance, entrance and exit is 14 feet, so on-street parking will not be allowed there. And I remember that the gentleman mentioned that they liked the opportunity to park on the street. Now, we did not receive any complaints from any, like, school buses or fire department ingress and egress to the neighborhood. The cost estimate that our staff came up with, we will show it to you a little bit. Adam did work on that. In order to remove that island all the way, 42.5 feet distance to allow this gentleman, when he gets into the neighborhood, to make very comfortable left turn, it will cost probably about $22,000. So, we were off, both of us, last time when we discussed an amount approximately $5,000 or less. So, I hope these are the findings that council was looking for when you asked the question. So, and they do have, I think, seven locations like that in Brandon Oak, nine locations, so we have to be careful that if we approve one, we'll end up with nine, and we're talking about probably, yeah, about $180,000. So, and we could see that anytime he gets in and out, if he drives a larger truck, definitely, it is a bit difficult for him to maneuver and, you know, making a sharp left and a sharp right. But, I mean, that's how the house was built and the condition exists at other locations. Staff in town, we don't have any objections of if the resident himself is stepping in and pay for the improvement, but it will be a burden on us if we're gonna do that throughout town. So, I'm putting it before council tonight to give us a direction whether to just don't do anything or move forward with something.
Ladies first.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the council that when the gentleman purchased the home, this was all set up already, so this didn't occur overnight. I mean, it's part of the plan. And you said there was nine more like this?
Nine entrances like that.
Are they all as restrictive as this is?
A few of them, yes.
Okay.
So... Go ahead.
David?
I was just gonna make a motion to not do it.
Okay. David's made a motion not to do it. Is there any conversation, comments?
Well, that's a question more for Patrick in that this is not a design flaw or some error on the town's part by accepting the road, right? This is perfectly legal as it is constructed right now.
If we have any... What we look at, Mr. McIntyre, we look at accidents, we look at people reporting issues, but from staff's side, we have not received any complaints. Adam, you've been here probably more than anybody else, you and Todd, but over the last eight, nine years, I don't think, and rocks, I don't think we've received any issues with any of these entrances unless you tell me otherwise. So, that right there, even if it does not comply with the ASH to Design Guidelines, but it's still accessible to neighborhoods that live there.
That's all I have. Mr. Cohen?
There's no other further conversation. Mr. Cohen's made a motion not to do any, not to put the town to do anything. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That brings us to board and committee appointments. Mr. Seadeck?
I think the item belongs to council, but...
Oh, council, okay.
It's okay. We did receive the, well, what we did in the pack, Kathy, did we provide council with a copy of, I think it's in front of you?
They do have a copy. It's item 10D in a little red ink pen in front of you.
And simply, it lists all the vacant positions that we have, and we do have a few of them that coming up at the end of June, so we felt that we kind of give council ample time to go ahead and think and decide and give us direction how to move forward. But all the applications have been, that we have, have been submitted to council or council has a copy of them, right?
Yes.
And I would like to have Karen chat a little bit about the ordinance that we have right now. Karen, would you like the policy? I'm sorry, not the ordinance.
Yeah, just very briefly. Today, we do, the town does have a policy regarding filling board vacancies, and I thought it would be helpful for you all to just review it. I do have copies of it, obviously not sitting here. It's better to just hand them out and you can all take them back and see what our current policy is, and then possibly make adjustments to that if, going forward, to make this process smoother and more sort of structured going forward. And like I said, the policy that I read is great, that we already have in place. It would just be a matter of getting the town staff and the council educated and working together to implement that policy that we have.
Okay. Any questions? Are they making any appointments? Mr. Cohen, is that you, or is that you? Whose hand went up? Oh, Ms. Shirley, okay.
I'm just wondering what I was gonna say now. Go ahead. You can go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Cohen, did you have something?
Did you have something to say?
I didn't raise my hand.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cohen, did you have something?
Did you have something to say?
I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay. No, Shirley did, okay.
I was sitting here in Neverland.
Mr. Sadek, is there any recommended course of action this evening?
Well, the addition, the intent of the addition of the item tonight is you could, you could have a small session like, counsel could have a small session like you had last time if you decide that you want to appoint some applicants that already submitted applications or if you would like to wait until the next meeting and then probably gives you a chance to go back and revisit the policy that Karen just mentioned and maybe do it that way. We just wanted to put that before you, let you decide what you want to do. So we, the options are there.
Karen, I'm not sure if this is still the right way, but if you're on the council, on the committee, and your time is up, you have to reapply if you want to stay in that position.
I can't, you know what? I'm sorry. I didn't read it close enough to remember that particular item, but that would make sense to me.
I had to do that for the Board of Adjustments.
That would make sense.
Mr. Head, did you want to say something?
Well, we just got one that, you know, the one, Mr. Evans, was on the ABC Board. And I think we've got an applicant that's going to be at the next ABC Board meeting. So we've got that one taken care of or working on that one. All others are expiring on 6/30. So I would say we put this on the agenda for the next meeting and go ahead and make the changes at that point in time. Gives us time to look at all the...
And all these openings are posted on the website through all our normal channels?
We have a, we have a page that details the different boards and committees. We do not post individual openings. We have in the past sent out news releases in different mailers when we do have a number of openings all at once. But in the past, they've, they've filled themselves pretty quickly, so we've not posted individual openings.
Okay. Mr. Head's recommended putting this on the next meeting and accepting applications between now and then and appointing. Is counsel okay with that? Consensus? That sounds like a plan. Okay. That's done. Brings us to new business. Item A, downtown revitalization, town property. Mr. Sadek?
Michael, can you go maybe to number three or more? Okay. I just wanted to share with counsel today what possibilities or maybe show you what can be done to a town property. This is the one that we have uptown. You can see the civic center and the art center. Simply you could take, and I really didn't count this one, but 1.6 acres downtown, you could put a large number of office buildings. And just this concept shows that you, you have a three-story, that you could have one office at the lower floor and then access to another one that is two stories on top. 70-something parking spaces are out there. In addition, as we, what I wanted to show counsel is that also we could rely on existing parking like what we have on Blythe Avenue. By the time Adam finishes, finishes his project, we will have approximately over 100 parking spaces in there. And that's really, this is how we need to do things in densified area. The stormwater also can be retained on site, as you see it in the middle, and accessibility to the site could be one way in, one way out. But that's what we, that's the idea about how to have, to revitalize downtown. This is one concept. There's so many of them out there. But we will work with any developer on this particular property to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. We've heard earlier from developers that retail is no longer there, but I think if you create the place for retail, would you imagine just walking into around the pond, which is a decorative pond, and you're looking at 60-something signs in there? I mean, it will draw people. It will draw pedestrians. And also the outside of the development also could be signed, too. So these are the type of conceptual designs that we need to work with developers to attract them, to bring them into downtown. Yes, everybody shop with Amazon these day, but Amazons these day, but, these days, but there's so many retailers out there, they still like to open. And many, we lack, I think in my opinion, being in Indian Trail, we do lack large number of office buildings. And so parking can be there, accessibility can be there. Then if, if a project like, like this comes online, then we won't have to worry too much about apartment complexes or maybe townhomes are close by. We don't have to worry too much about congestion because, you know, people could cross the street and walk from the apartment complex to this office building. And there are also a lot of young individuals out there that they like to open their own businesses, but they cannot afford having offices somewhere in a big business at South Park in downtown. The, the lease will be probably half or maybe one-third of what you pay and you don't have to commute. So what I'm trying to show the audience and counsel and share with staff today that we have to be a bit creative to really have a place for business and residents and people that want, want to open new businesses. And as you see, the last two meetings, we invited eight new businesses that they came into town. So do you imagine if we have, I'm going to take a guess right now, probably 10, 20, I would say probably 40-something buildings out there, 40-something new businesses could come into town? So that, we're beginning to think about this culture uptown. And then when we say revitalization of uptown, that's what we're trying to do. So we're going to keep, keep the idea and the vision and as we move forward, we keep communicating with, with counsel. But for this particular lot, and I've talked to Karen, we could, we could have, we could communicate with developers out there. And if they're interested in putting something that is a part of our vision, we definitely move forward with that. But this is not the process. This is just the concept. We still have to go through the review process and the plans submitted and the permitting and all that stuff. But I thought I'll share something with you tonight. What could you, this is what you could do with 1.6 acres. There was a concept like that, Rocks reminded me, the businesses with the residents on top, where was it built? At Chris Mark or?
Banter.
So, and it didn't, probably it wasn't that successful there, but it could make it uptown. Uptown is different, especially if you have very densified area and the traffic. We heard from DOT that Gribble has a traffic that 2040. This is like for year 2040. So we know the, the commute is there. We know that people will drive their cars and look at the businesses. So that is a bit different from that location at Banter that it doesn't have 15,000 vehicles a day. Michael, can you flip to the other one? Now, the first, the first one showed all the buildings outside of the railroad of way. We do not know if the rail will allow the developer to build anything within the 100-foot. But this is another concept, similar to the other one, but the buildings that encroach on the railroad, railroad of way. One more, Michael. So we, I just wanted to share with counsel and the audience that counsel, with the new master, with the new UDO, with the new Park Master Plan and many other items that we're working on, we're kind of trying to put everything together. Hopefully, within a six-month or a year, we could come to a place where all that stuff is ready for us to follow. So, any questions?
What's the pulse of the existing businesses around, around this? Have they chimed in on, on this proposal?
Well, we haven't, we haven't shared this one with anyone yet except a couple of developers. And believe it or not, counsel member Morse, a lot of them feel that the momentum is moving to this area right here. Yes, it's moving to the park in Carolina Course and Town Hall. And I did have a developer that is interested in this parcel right here to open a business. We do have two parcels on both sides of the buildings. But the pulse, when you say, then I think if a project like this becomes successful, I think you will see other buildings and lots along uptown step into the bar and trying to compete. Because if you have a small retail or a shopping center or five, six shops that it's an old building from the 60s or whatever, and then you come up with something new right here, it's a small, like small village of retail or offices, definitely I think they will have a rough time to compete with a new concept like this if they don't step to the bar and be part of revitalization.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick. That brings us to employee healthcare insurance. Mr. Sadek?
Thank you, sir. Simply, we, we had, we wanted to shop around this year before the budget gets adopted. We had two option, two options. One of them is to stay with the same company that we have or choose another company that's offering us approximately $11,000 a year in savings. What we do have for our employees right now, we do have the medical insurance, we do have vision, we do have dental. And we also had a program called Health Reimbursement Account. Simply what it does is it reimburses a lot of out-of-pocket to employees that have a lot of out-of-pocket. So what we're trying to do this year is take advantage of this new company that they do give us periodic report, reports. These reports, they only go to HR and they do a lot of education. So if we choose option two, new company, we will save, like I said, about $11,000. And also we're canceling the HR, which has had a budget of about $10,000, and we're replacing it with wellness program, which is about $3,600. So we have, we're saving money both ways and we're adding wellness program on top of that. The new option, there is a possibility that if, if the spendings weren't there, not a lot of employees visited the doctor or urgent cares or emergency rooms, with this new company, there is a possibility that they could give us back an amount of approximately $39,000, Jim. So if with the education part of it and the wellness program, there's another saving of approximately $40,000 that we get at the end of the year. So it's a win-win situation and HR, Jim and I, and we're all in agreement that this option is, is better than the one that we have. And tomorrow, Jim, if I'm not mistaken, the agent will be coming in to share that with all the employees, correct? So if, if counsel is okay with this proposal, we would like to go ahead and move with option number two. Definitely we do have a lot of savings out there, so.
Any, Mr. Head?
So let me understand this. We're getting savings and it's the same, same level of coverage?
The company that we have, Michael, right now, they're proposing an increase between 3.5 to 5.5. This second company, the increase is, I think it's 1.1? Right. So if we stick with the same company, we'll be paying a larger increase. So the first saving we're having here, Michael, is the difference in the increase this year between, let's say, 4.5 and 1.1. The second item we're saving is the $11,000. This is in premium. That's the difference between the company that we have and the company, the new company. And the third saving is we're deleting the HRA program that had the $10,000 budget and we're purchasing a program, which is the wellness program of $3,600. And the last saving, which is number four, it will be the $39,000. If we reach a certain, if we remain at a certain spending level, we will get that $39,000 back. So we're looking at four savings between company number one and company number two. And I hope that answers your question.
I'm more interested in what the employees get. So the coverage will still be basically the same?
The coverage will be basically the same, sir.
Okay.
And with dental and vision, there is only an increase of 50% per employee per pay period.
I understand what you're telling me. I just want to make sure that, that what they have now will not decrease in service.
Will not. It will be the same, Michael.
All right.
The same. The only, the additional part of it is the educational part. We will be receiving those reports that will provide us with a lot of information on how to do things and save money and get healthier, et cetera, et cetera. So we're asking counsel's approval to move forward with...
You need a motion?
I make a motion to approve it.
To approve Mr. Sadek's choice?
I just am curious. Is this something normally that counsel does? Or is this not a, is this not a, an HR policy that, I'm just curious? Because, because I don't believe the counsel really knows the, the details of what the insurance is. I'm just, so I don't even know that we can, you know, we, we should even be approving something that we really don't know anything about, sir.
No, most of the time, David, it's handled at the staff level, but because the budget, budget time and we're changing the company from, you know, we're taking off a company and bringing in another one, we just want to make sure that counsel is okay with that. If there's...
Budgetary standpoint.
Yeah. If there is no approval, I mean, if you don't think that you have to have a motion, we're fine. We'll move forward with option number two.
That we, as part of the personal policy, we offer health insurance and it's usually the staff's decision to go, which direction they want to go with that. I think this is informative for the board, knowing that Patrick's making a budgetary decision and apparently services for the employees are staying the same. So no action, which is required by counsel.
We don't need a motion? No? Okay. Choice is yours. All right. That brings us to the manager's update. Mr. Sadek?
The first item is our splash pad is going to be open this coming Friday. Jason and Adam really been spending some time on this. So finally, it's going to be open this coming Friday. So Friday morning, afternoon, Jason or what?
Friday night, Thursday.
Right, there you go. Two more items. Rocks and his staff, they're working very diligently on, on the annexation master plan. So we will be presenting that before counsel next week. And Jason also has been getting some feedback from the Park Master Plan and we should be wrapping up that process probably within month and a half or so. As soon as we get the draft, we'll come and share it before counsel, too. So all these master planning items that you've been seeing on the report for the last four or five months, they're coming to fruition right now. So appreciate your patience, but these are the three big-ticket items and I will be sending a manager's report this coming Friday. If counsel has any questions.
Will those be available for the public to review?
Definitely. You're talking about the master plan?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, sir. When we, when we share with you the draft, definitely the documents needs to be out there for public to review. So we will have a public notice and then we, we will provide the documentation here and public library and many other places.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Nope. That brings us to counsel comments.
Quick today. Ms. Howe?
Just like to thank everyone for coming. We say this every week, but we're really glad you're here. And it was good to see the Girl Scouts out in the audience and it was very refreshing to see some young people get up there and get a taste of what it's like going to a council meeting. They didn't bring any cookies, though. I guess they're, they're all gone. And the staff, again, thanks for all you do and Patrick and, and my coworkers here. We workers, I guess we are. And drive safely and thanks for coming. Hope to see you at the next meeting, too. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thank you. Mr. Martin, welcome. Looking forward to building a relationship with Stallings. Thank the staff as always. It's actually light outside. Can we believe it? So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. Again, appreciate staff, appreciate staff and all that they've done. Again, appreciate staff, appreciate staff and all that they've done, appreciate everybody coming, and see you next time.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Mr. Martin, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate having you, thank you for the invite. One of the business owners came up this evening and spoke of the help that they received in opening the business. I found that was very positive, that he recognized all the help that Rox and Maya and all the other people that he named gave him to open his business. So, that's really good that the town's staff is working to help new businesses come in and providing the roadmap, especially for those who probably hadn't opened one in the town before. So, good job, guys, give it up. Patrick, to you and your staff, keep doing the good work. Council, appreciate the support, the help, the information, and that we all do. Mr. Cohen, your efforts on the golf tournament is not going unnoticed, so keep working, and if you have an assignment for me, maybe an easy one, I'll take it. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and have a safe drive home.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Marcus. And just real quick on the golf tournament, if everybody, anybody doesn't know about it, golf tournament, June 30th, it's not just me, it's a lot of people sitting in this room, a lot of people sitting up here, working real hard, putting this golf tournament together. So, we're gonna, and we, we need to talk to you about this golf tournament, too, man, we need to get you guys involved in it. It's the Veterans Memorial, so it, I'm sure we have a lot of veterans in Stallings, so, you know, get everybody involved. If you know anybody that's a golfer, bring them on, we'll have a good time. Go eat lunch and have a lot of fellowship, and, and we're just, I'm looking forward to, to the day, and like I said, a lot of people up here helping. Thank everybody for coming tonight, thank staff, I was like Marcus. Also, that was, I was, nice to hear that, that staff were so helpful. It's about time we heard that, and, and, I mean, it's, it's nice, it's nice to hear, because I know that happens, I know how hard you guys work to make that happen. But, you know, as the old saying goes, if you do something wrong, a lot of people are going to talk about it, if you do something right, people aren't going to talk about it. People are talking about what you're doing right, so I'm happy, guys doing a good job. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
And Mr. Morse?
Again, John, thank you so much for attending our council meeting. The reciprocations were really nice, thank you. One thing I noticed about tonight was a lot of posi, I don't know if this is a good, appropriate word, positivity? Does that sound like Cam Newton? Positivity, posi, but it was very positive, just like with the Girl Scouts, they brought forth a, a problem, and they didn't just bring the problem to us, they also brought solutions as well, and that was very encouraging. So, we could learn a lot from, from some of our smaller people, for sure. Really excited about the, the future of our youth. One of the note I had in here. Yes, Captain Cobal. We all know that D-911 for an emergency call, and I didn't want Stallings to, to feel left out of the crime wave, but, you know, they've recently had an issue with a, a person stealing flowers out of flower beds. So, what is the appropriate number to call when, when you see something like that happening, when it's not an emergency, but you want to make your law enforcement aware?
911. Listen, I tell everybody, here's my spill on that, if you want to know what time the parade starts, don't call 911. But seriously, if somebody, if you need a response from us, then call 911, and that goes for Stallings, Waxall, Monroe, us, with the sheriff's office, call 911, because that's, if you call our front desk number, that's in the telephone book, in the same way at Stallings, in the same way at Marshall, if it's after hours, it's going to auto route you to the 911 center. If it's during hours and you say, somebody's stealing the flowers out of Shirley's garden out here, they're going to say, hang on while I transfer you. They're going to transfer you, and the 911 operator's going to pick up the telephone. So, you can bypass all of that by just calling 911, so.
But not if you want to go to the parade and want to know what time.
And yes, that was, it's very nice to, to hear the positivity from the businesses, and as they, as they're speaking in regards to the staff here. For years, you know, you, I would hear through the rumor mill, oh, it's hard doing business in Indian Trail, and you got to do this and that, and we're not hearing that now, it's wonderful, and y'all doing a great, great job, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.
And Mayor Alvarez?
Real quick, as we did a proclamation for the North Carolina Veterans Hall of Fame, there was, I had sent an email to council in regards to the 4th of July for a recommendation for our grand marshal. Recently, the United States Post Office approved a PTS stamp, which all proceeds from the sale of this stamp, which begins next year, will go directly to the VA to treat veterans with PTSD. Mr. Garland Denny, an Indian Trail resident, after was, and military vet, spent years lobbying the federal government, I mean, literally sticking envelopes in the face of every dignitary that visited any city, and recently eyewitnessed his son sticking envelope in front of Vice President Pence's face right before he got tackled. But the Vice President did take the envelope. Thanks to their efforts, veterans with PTSD will now be noticed and treated, and this all came from Indian Trail. So, I'd like to add to the recommendation for the grand marshal for the 4th of July, Mr. Chuck Denny, who is an Indian Trail resident for all they've accomplished, which will be on the council's agenda in an upcoming meeting, along with the other recommendations. But I just wanted all those listening to understand what a father-and-son duo did to support our veterans. Mr. Denny Senior did this until the day he passed away, and his son grabbed the gauntlet and just ran with it, all for our veterans. And the second thing, WC, if you can give 30 seconds up there, he wanted to offer a fundraiser for our Veterans Memorial, and I'm going to yield a few seconds to him to explain what he's willing to do.
I appreciate it, Mayor. So, we're, we're a seasonal business, obviously, but for a lot of reasons, which I won't take the time, this Veterans Memorial means a lot to me personally for many reasons. And we're a new business, and it's a fun place, you know, the snowball cabin, you can come and hang out and, and get your snowball. And I would like to, we had talked about doing a grand opening for us, and I would like to possibly put two things together, maybe have our grand opening, and give a, a significant portion of that day's proceeds, the entire business day, to this Veterans Memorial. But I don't know the exact date or anything yet, but I'd really like to do that. And, you know, we've, our, our colors are red, white, and blue, we have flags, you know, everywhere, and so I, I don't know, like I said, the fine details, but we are, we are seasonal, so we need to do it fairly soon.
So, I assume Mr. Parks will be, work, you can, would work with him, Patrick, on that?
Yes, we'll be more than happy, we'll, we'll contact you probably within the next couple of days.
Okay.
And we'll see what works best for you.
Great, great.
And we'll take it from there, and we'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, whatever you think that, that could help both of us out.
And I'll give all the council members a free topping or something.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can we take his picture with you?
Yes, well, as soon as we, before the recess, that adds to your positivity there, Mr. Morse. On that note, we have a closed session in accordance with NCGS 143-318-1183. To protect attorney-client privilege, I need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous. We'll take a five-minute break.
Yes.
All right, council, your mics are now live.
I'll make a motion, then we come out of closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Want to make a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
You got to get that thing down.